Good evening and welcome, everyone. Hello, welcome to the Monday, May 22 Bennington Select Board Meeting. I'm Jeannie Jenkins, I have the pleasure of chairing this board. I'd like other board members to introduce themselves, starting with Sarah.
Yes, good evening, Sarah Perrin.
Hi, I'm Gary Corry.
Good evening, I'm Jim Carroll.
Hi, Tom Haley.
I'm Ed Woods.
Last but not least, Jean Conner.
Lovely, and also with us tonight, we have Town Manager Stu Hurd. We have Nancy Lively, who takes excellent minutes for us as always. We have Jonah Spivak on the computer, yes. And we have Josh Boucher on CAT TV, which we completely thank them so much for doing. And we have Jim Fiers here as well. Oh, sorry, okay, all right. Oh, okay. Hence the hat. First order of business tonight, I want to ask if we could amend the agenda just slightly, and pull the proclamation for the Rescue Squad out of the Consent Agenda and make it essentially 2A, so have it right after the vision statement. Nope, nope, nope. So, so... I'm sorry, please. So have it right after the vision statement? Could I have, could I have a motion to do that? Thank you. Thank you. Any discussion? All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Wonderful, thank you. All right, so, next up, first on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Jim, would you lead us in that?
Sure. I collect the allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberate and just as for all.
Thank you very much, Jim. And Tom, would you read the town vision that guides all our work?
Bennington is a welcoming, engaged, inclusive, resilient community where everyone, regardless of identity, shares in our vitality and benefits from an outstanding quality of life.
Thank you very much. So, we want to start tonight with a proclamation in honor of the 60th, 60th anniversary of the Bennington Rescue Squad. And Tom is going to read a proclamation.
Right. Town of Bennington Proclamation for EMS Week. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the Bennington Rescue Squad was organized in March of 1963 and is celebrating its 60th anniversary of service to the community, and whereas the members of the Bennington Rescue Squad are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, 7 days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, and whereas the Bennington Rescue Squad consists of dedicated first responders, emergency medical technicians, advanced emergency medical technicians, paramedics, critical care paramedics, educators, and the trained members of the public, and whereas the members of the Bennington Rescue Squad engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. Now therefore, the people of Bennington celebrate the Bennington Rescue Squad on its 60th anniversary and are very grateful for its continuous service to the community. Recognizing that, we, the Bennington Select Board, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week, and encourage the community to observe this week and celebrate 60 years of public service by the Bennington Rescue Squad, dated at Bennington, Vermont, this 22nd day of May, 2023.
And I would ask, I know there are a number of members of the Rescue Squad here, would you please come up and let us recognize you? And Bill, if you have anything that you would like to share, we would certainly welcome that, too.
I think there can't be enough said about or thanks given to these dedicated crew members that we have at Bennington Rescue. Our staff of 28 individuals, whether they're in our administrative positions in the billing office, all the way out to critical care paramedics dedicate a lot of time, effort, to trying to keep our community safe. And I thank you for this proclamation. We do have a few events coming up this week, open to the public. We have Save a Life Day on Thursday, May 25th, so folks can sign up on our website, benningtonrescue.org, and you can get free hands-only CPR, Narcan, and Stop the Bleed training. We have a morning session and an afternoon session. And then we're having a celebration of our crew members that are winning awards this year, on Friday, the 26th, at 2:00 PM at Bennington Rescue Station. Everyone is welcome, and we hope to have a good time celebrating the accomplishments of our crew members. So, if I could be so forward as to say, you got to give these guys a round of applause here, please.
We are so pleased that you're here, and we will be signing a proclamation, yes?
I believe you have the original.
You gave me the original? Oh my goodness. Where? No, this is my copy. Okay.
There's not one in the, in the warrants packet there, should be.
At the back, yeah. Okay, yes, and we're gonna, so hang out, hang around for one second, so we can sign this and give you your gold-stamped copy, which is beautiful. All right, Jim, let us do it that way? Yep? Yes, and, yes, and I thank you, and I hope that many in the community will be able to come to your events this week. I'm planning to, and we cannot thank you enough for all you, for our community.
We'll also be at MayFest with the same type of education, just not as intense. So stop by, say hi, half of us will be there that are up here right now, so we hope to see you there as well. A great community event and a great reason to stop by and say hi. Our bike team will be there as well, trying to keep everybody safe, and hopefully it's packed, so we have to use them instead of our ambulances or getting around on foot.
Great, we're riding as fast as we can. Can I have that? Yes. Jean is bringing you a proclamation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody.
All right, and now we move on to the more mundane and less exciting pieces, next piece, which is the Consent Agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the Consent Agenda? Thank you. Second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on the Consent Agenda?
I just have a really quick question. The 2023 tobacco substitute endorsement, is that something we've seen before and I've just missed it, and what is that? Is it vaping? It's the only thing I can think of.
Frankly, I'm not familiar with the term.
Okay.
I just know that under the new law, tobacco licenses are also sent to the Select Board. In the past, you were only the Liquor Control Board, now you're apparently also the Tobacco Control Board.
And tobacco substitute?
Yes, ma'am.
Endorsement, okay.
Every vice.
Whatever that is.
All right, all right, and Nancy, I apologize, but on the public hearing on the kennel license, line 99, the name should be Gore.
That was one of the 15, actually?
Uh, yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
What is it again?
Uh, line 99, it just, it should be Jeff Gore.
Wasn't spay misspelled as well?
I didn't see that.
Spade was...
Okay.
Oh, I had it, now I don't have it in front of me.
Check this, do not spade.
I don't know, I didn't do it.
Okay. It's the same ones, it's the kennel, the kennel hearing minutes.
Right.
I'll find it, you can go on, Jeannie, I'll find it.
Okay, well, we're gonna, it's, if there are no other questions or comments, we're going to vote on it, so, Jean, don't go away. All those in favor of accepting the Consent Agenda with the changes, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Jean, did you vote?
Oh, no. Aye.
Okay. To all of them, okay, yeah. Okay, good, great, thank you. So that moves us on to public comment. First up is Jenny Dewar to talk about the BBC.
Hi, Jenny Dewar, Director of Events for the Better Bennington Corporation. Just a few, a few things. MayFest is this Saturday, please, everybody come, it's gonna be bigger, a lot bigger than last year, we have 111 vendors, it may well be the biggest one yet, from what I've heard. The footprint's a little different, it'll wrap all the way around Pleasant Street into the park. We even have littles who are vending, so I've got six vendors who are aged 13 and under, and they will all be in Merchants Park, please visit them and buy things from them. They're all pretty excited and have been posting stuff they're, they're creating. Thursday Night Live is going to start immediately after, next week, next Thursday, so that's June 1st, and the reason I'm starting a week earlier than I had intended is there's an incredible ensemble that's gonna be in town called Sa Kumuu, which is a West African dance and music ensemble, and I had them at Williams College in 2010, and they are wonderful, so please come to the park, free concert. If you would like to sponsor Thursday Night Live, please reach out, because we are still looking for money to make it all happen, but I'm just going on a wing and prayer and know it's going to come in. The townwide tag sale applications are out, more info will follow when I am recovered from MayFest, but that's gonna be on July 22nd, so you can go ahead and fill out those applications, they can be dropped off at the Better Bennington Corporation, 215 South Street, or they can be dropped off at the Bennington Free Library here, or the John J. McCullough Library in North Bennington. We had our first Hemmings Cruise in, it was a huge success. For instance, 421 said it was the busiest night they've ever had, I think. So that was very exciting, we have four more coming, so if you didn't get a chance to come, you still have another, several more chances. And in case you don't know, WTEM News came to Bennington on Friday morning and did their live broadcast from Bennington, they're doing a series of downtowns that they find interesting, and this is the first time they've done anything in Vermont with this series. And so lots of people, leaders in town, were interviewed by them, and it was really a great time, so if you didn't get a chance to watch it live, you can check their links on their website. And I also want to say thank you especially to Tom and Jean for volunteering for MayFest, and also to Shannon Barsati, I appreciate the town's support and excited to have the Rescue Squad and the Fire Department and the police all taking care of us. Any questions about upcoming events? Great. Have a wonderful evening.
Great, thank you very much. All right, next up is Sam Rustino, update from the last meeting.
Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. As you know, last meeting that I was here, I mentioned May 9th, which is Fentanyl Awareness Day, as you can see. I had to work pretty quick because I got news of it in the banner, reading that they were acknowledging fentanyl, and because of this time, not only in Bennington but surrounding areas, there has been an increase of overdose and people passing on because overdose of other drug reaction. So I took it upon myself on that day to do a candlelight vigil. I surely thought people would come and support, because there was chatter on social media about loved ones that are going through it, or loved ones that have passed away. It didn't go that way. Yeah, I got the toots, I got the thumbs ups, I got, let them drop dead, leave them alone, but I started early, I started at 4:30 in the afternoon and continued until 8:30, so I did my diligence on that. But I was a little disheartened that it was just an awareness day, and there should have been a little more enunciation on that. Secondly, I did attend a BRCRC meeting, which was up at the museum, the same as the Gracious Car Show or Cruise Night that took place on Main Street, and out of that meeting, I was open to the general public, the new vocabulary is health, equity, and diversity. So that's the language that is going to be in the chatter of this, since we are being governed by the BRCRC. Uh, let's see, what else? We got a, since we're an Appalachian Trail community, we've got a meeting here tomorrow, here at the firehouse, I think 6 o'clock, 6:30. Memorial Day's at the end of the month, on the 29th, and I assume the Bennington Town is gonna be having a Memorial Day Parade. I haven't seen anything as of yet.
Sam, I just want to remind you, three minutes.
Thank you, I can squeeze it in. On that day is MayFest, we also have due diligence on the cemetery, they have to be done numerous repairs, we've got a crew that come, comes in, Jonah, put that out on the website, that they're coming in to reset more of the stones, and they're looking for volunteers, I believe they probably do have the volunteers, so that's earlier part of the morning. Uh, let's see, what else we got going? I find it disheartening that our farmer's market has moved to Ponle, Vermont temporarily, I hope it does come back. Let's see, what else we got going? I will be commenting on other agenda items, and when you post the packet, sometimes in the packet, there should be a little bit more discussion to the general public, because people just read the packet, and there might be some people that want to have a discussion on the packet items. For example, as we know, Bridge Number 6 is gonna be working on, and in that packet, we're starting the conversation of what work has to be done with Beet Street and East Main Street, just to give you an example. I noticed that there was some excavation that was going on at the Ben High, we'll be talking about that later on. And we've had a good week, we had a car show Thursday, the car cruise, we had Channel 10 that came in, that bleamed us really well all week.
Sam, Sam, I'm gonna ask you not to, your three minutes are up, okay?
A few more things, and we've had, we've had a good, we've had a good, good week, so I can't, and Burger King is coming back, so we've had a good week. Thank you for your time, sorry, I went over the three minutes.
Thanks, thanks, Sam. All right, and then Mike Bethel for advertising.
What do you mean, everybody? She's saying I'm a loud speaker. I might need a little bit over the time, because I want to talk about two things.
Well, no, you have three minutes during public comment, so speed talk, but introduce yourself to begin with.
Mike Bethel, Bennington.
Thank you.
One, I want to ask for some money from the town, your advertising money, that you have about $40,000 to promote Bennington, and I'd like to see some of it go towards ads in the paper, the Bennington Banner, about our town's businesses and what's going on. I worked out, I thought she'd be here tonight, but she's on vacation, Susan Plisant, to give us maybe a decent price on ads once a week, half-page ads on the back, or full-page ads, we put businesses around the edge of it, and maybe a message in the middle that we're alive and well in Bennington, and we'd love to have people come and shop in our downtown and our general town. I know the BBC has done something like that before, I know the BBC is planning on doing something, but I would like to do it and move it a little bit faster, because it's already the end of May, and if we get something in, even if it's not the first week in June, get something in June, then July, then August, and September, because as you all know, we've got about 16,000 residents in Bennington, and between Ponle and Shasbury, there's, together, there's about 7,000, plus the banner goes out to New York and all around. So if people started to see that we're alive and well and ready to take nourishment, in the last few summers, we've had some pretty good summers, and I go downtown all the time, and it's really disappointing that there's not a lot of foot traffic for the merchants in the downtown, there's plenty of traffic over on North Side Drive, but I've talked to a bunch of the merchants, and they'd love to see something like this happen. Some of them said they would be able to donate some money to it, I've asked some other people that I know that would donate some money to it, don't know how much they'll do, but we need to do something to get the word out, that we're, you know, downtown Bennington, and they got some great shops down there over the last few years. I mean, there's some really nice shops down there, you know, and you could color-code it, you could do the eateries in one color, the ads, and the commercial on the other, and if lawyers wanted to do it, or businessmen, whatever, they could do it, too. That's one thing. The other thing I have to talk about is what's on the agenda, but I can't stay for the end of it.
No, I'm sorry, you cannot talk about an agenda item outside of the agenda.
Well, I can support something, then.
I'm, well...
Wait a minute.
Make a state, just make it, make a statement, but you cannot, you cannot have discussion about it.
You're gonna like this one, relax. I like what's going on now with the Ben High, and I think it's gonna bring more of the traffic, foot traffic, eventually, once it's done in a couple of years. I do warn the board that you've got to make sure that it's not gonna eat up the budget every year, or be put in the budget, our part of it, but your mission from the beginning of it, I liked, then it got kind of squirrely with the Shires and all of the not knowing exactly what.
Mike, you're skating here, you're skating.
Excuse me?
Okay, you're skating on the edge, okay?
I don't skate, I don't skate, pal, I'm in this thing, I don't ever skate, but, you know, since the Hales got into it, I think it's more solid of a proposal, and, you know, this guy here's taking a lot of risk, so I do think it's, it's gonna be a good project if it goes the way people, Shannon, don't pass out. She's ready to go, what the hell?
Okay, all right, thank you, thank you, Mike.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
All right, all right, all right, so, let's move into the next agenda item, and we're very happy to welcome Jen Conley. We're very interested in hearing an update on the roundabouts that are proposed for, for Bennington.
Excellent, thank you, thank you. I'm Jen Conley, I'm with VHB.
You're gonna have to talk a little closer, okay?
And if you go to the next slide, we start out with introductions, so I'm the project manager from VHB, and you've heard from my coworker Nicole previously, and we're here talking to you on behalf of V-Trans about what has been put up as a locally proposed project. I'm gonna give a little bit of an overview of what happened last time, in case there are folks here who haven't heard, I will try to be very brief on that, happy to answer questions afterwards, but then we'll jump into the meat of what we need to accomplish today, which is really to get some support from the Select Board, so that we can keep moving along in the process and be eligible for a future V-Trans project. So, moving on, our project team really consists of V-Trans and VHB in support of V-Trans, as well as the town, as I said, we need your endorsement, and the Regional Commission, because the Regional Commission is who proposes these locally proposed projects. So, again, to be very brief, that's really the, the three parts that end up working together for these projects. Moving on to the agenda is really to go through kind of the background of the process, where we are here, what that study area is, which I'm sure you're all more familiar with even than I am, but then talking about confirming that, that purpose and need that you discussed last time with Nicole, and that we've summarized, because that needs to be a very specific thing that we approve, and then talking about what those next steps are. So as I mentioned, the VPSP2 process is the asset management process that V-Trans undertakes, and one of the things that they've done recently is taken more local input, and so that's what was proposed here as a part of this, that the intersections we're talking about today were proposed by your Regional Commission to get moved forward as potential projects. And that is, you know, a wonderful thing that the, the process really takes into account, and there's a grading system, and your project has advanced at least past that initial grade. And so, moving into the next slide, is really the study area, and so the study area extends from US 7 over to Hickson Orchard, along 7A, along North Side Drive, and includes the three intersections that you see highlighted here. And some of the things that were mentioned on the next slide at the past meetings or in past documentation, is that these locations are important connection to the multimodal path network, that there are high crash occurrence at these three locations, and that these are overbuilt intersections that provide a poor balance of, of modes, and maybe not the best gateway into Bennington. So, just to dig into the safety, there is two high-crash intersections and one high-crash segment located in this very short corridor, so there is that documented safety concern, which was, I'm sure, one of the reasons the project's advanced, is because a safety concern obviously gets a high rating for something that needs to be addressed. So, this is just a number of the studies that you folks, whether it's the town, the town plan, the, you know, the county, or specific reports have been done to try to address some of these issues that are occurring at these intersections, and so we delved into a few of them. On the next slide, you'll see I just highlight the bike head connections, I think Nicole had that at her previous one, just where that was really highlighted for us, I know you've done some recent work there, and so today I saw a bunch of people on bikes and pedestrians in that corridor, so I think it's very successful. So, the next slide really gets into that purpose and need, and so what we saw and what Nicole heard, and what we, we found from the documentation, is that the purpose of the project is to safely and efficiently accommodate all modes of traffic at this gateway to Bennington. And so I guess I would pause here and ask for the input from the Select Board, you know, does that sound like, does that document what you all feel the purpose of the project is?
Yeah, I'm wondering if, if there, if it makes sense to add anything about it being an attractive gateway?
Okay, I can see if we can get that into...
And I'm not, we're wedded to that, but just thinking that is another...
Yep, yep. And then the needs...
Jean, you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is part of, it's rotaries that you're proposing, um...
Well, ultimately, we're gonna get to that, because that's what you, you get to give me that feedback today.
Okay, okay, so maybe my question, my comment's premature, but I was just gonna say, it would enhance movement of traffic.
Okay, okay.
If we could just mention that that's a critical, that's our commercial district, so moving traffic along efficiently, safely, very important to taxpayers.
Okay.
Other, other comments on this?
And that purpose is supported by what we've identified as the needs, improving the intersection safety for all users, creating that transition zone into Bennington, talking about that gateway, and improving those bicycle and pedestrian connections, were all things that were identified as needs or deficiencies at these locations. So just to get into the previously identified alternatives, very quickly, there was a scoping study that was done years and years ago, had to really dust this one off, but it was upgrades to the traffic signals, it was some modification of lanes, it was providing sidewalks and crosswalks throughout, and providing a shoulder for bicycle access. If you go to the next slide, I think it actually just highlights, you know, those, the two intersections that are relevant to us, and highlights what was proposed at each intersection, and in the yellow box was what ultimately was added as a potential grade-separated pedestrian crossing. Now, of course, I know there is a crossing out there now, that's a part of the path that you have installed, but that was something that was contemplated as a part of that study, and so we're just providing you with those were some of the previously identified alternatives. Now moving on, more recently, and you brought up the roundabouts, was the North Street Area Infrastructure Study, and that really got into, you can, you can jump ahead of this, this is summarizing the study, happy to talk, happy to talk about it, but I know, obviously, we don't have too much time, but, so here are the sketches of the roundabouts that came out of that study as a proposal, and it was anticipated to be single-lane roundabouts, and here are some of the specifics about how we would, at the time, they wanted to accomplish that, and they did a little further analysis that you'll see on the next page, just talking about whether it made sense to do these roundabouts at each of, each of those locations. So one of the things that we have done now as a part of this process is just taken a further look into these two analyses, and if you go to the next slide, really, we took a look at whether you could do these intersections as single-lane or double-lane, and you'll see, we're kind of in the middle band with those intersections, which is really the area between a single and a double lane, but either way, certainly roundabouts can accommodate the traffic at these locations. On the next slide, you'll see the operations between signal and roundabout are very similar, but in, a lot of the appeal about the roundabout is reducing the amount of pavement and really slowing the traffic. There's also an improvement to safety that we highlight on the next slide, that just talks about what the anticipated number of crashes are between a signalized intersection and a roundabout, and put that in terms of dollars, you know, cr... and a roundabout, and put that in terms of dollars, you know, crashes are associated with a cost to society. And then finally, on the last slide here, is really the roundabout potential benefits that really improve that vehicle safety, we just talked about. It slows traffic, and pedestrians only cross one lane at a time, so it improves that pedestrian safety. It is going to improve the aesthetics by really removing some of that pavement and making the intersection smaller, and of course reduces idling at red traffic signals, and so does improve the environment. And so, one of the things we do also have to talk about, there are some of those constraints, so that the select board is aware, obviously, there is a cost to roundabouts, and especially at Orchard and Hicks, we would anticipate some right-of-way costs, because there are private property owners very close to that intersection, so that would be a challenge. In addition, you have a lot of open curb cuts down at that end, and so you would need to kind of work with businesses to determine how those sites get access, especially to a roundabout. I think in any alternative, you'd probably do a little better access management, but a roundabout obviously changes that quite a bit, how those businesses operate. Things like moving forward, the pedestrian crossing, an underpass is very costly, and trying to encourage people to use it can be very, very difficult, so it's one of those things, if you are going to endorse roundabout alternatives to continue along in the process, the underpass may or may not move forward, but that's something that would be evaluated with further engineering design as the project moves on. And then one of the things to think about is really the transition zone that you end up getting on US 7, because you are going from, obviously, a high-speed facility down to what we would want to bring to like a local, and it would have a speed of, say, 25 miles an hour around the roundabout, that's quite a transition. So the project would likely need to extend further up US 7 to really transition that, to get that traffic to go slower before they get there. We don't want the jamming on of brakes right when they get to the roundabout, we want that to transition through design as they proceed down there. So I know I spoke very quickly, but I know we have limited time, so just wanted to open it up to discussion and input and thoughts from the select board.
Questions?
When does the plan start?
I'm gonna go back and start designing it right now, now.
Yeah, I hate to be petty, can you pull up the, the map? I think there was a citizens' bank on the map, there's no citizens' bank there. Keep going back, 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 back.
If it was from one of the old studies, there could have been a citizens' bank there at that time.
Keep going back, keep going back. One more, two more. Hmm, yeah, citizens' bank?
Oh, interesting, okay.
I don't know where that came from, anyway.
I don't know where that came from either, but yes, we can edit that out.
I like accuracy.
Yeah.
I'm assuming the crashes that occurred at a roundabout are less severe, or maybe I shouldn't assume that, because the rate of speed is lower.
Typically, yes.
So it's not only fewer, they're less severe.
Exactly, yes.
And then the Route 298, was that, is that?
279.
279.
Yeah, 289, sorry about that.
It's 279.
279.
279, yeah, okay, that's it.
I guess I'm just trying to imagine what that transition would look like on 279, I'm trying to picture roundabouts that I've gone through, and I'm really, I'm not picturing it.
Well, so, one of the things I thought was very interesting and might help you visualize it, if you remember, US 7 used to come into town, and that intersection had a three-lane approach with, there was a right turn bay in addition to the two through lanes, and now if you drive it, you can't even tell there ever was a right turn lane there. So my guess is, to get that transition to work, there would be a lane drop, and it could be a half mile upstream, that, you know, as pavement narrows, you get drivers to go slower, and then if you drop the lane and assemble everybody into a single lane, that's how you do it. And you really, if you, if you think in an urban environment, well, thinking in your downtown, your lane widths are narrower, there's a lot of friction, there's a lot, there's a number of ways through design features that you can make the driver feel like they're more constrained and get them to go slower. So my guess is that would be what that attempt would be, would be, to find a way to redesign the road so it's not as narrow. A lot of pavement encourages us to go faster.
Stu?
Yes, the state of Vermont traditionally has not allowed or encouraged plantings in their median strips, for whatever reason. As, as, in that transition zone, as you come down that hill, as you narrow the lanes, it may also be advisable to add some plantings into that median strip, because plantings also tend to slow traffic down.
Yes.
It's a traffic calming mechanism that may work in that particular location.
Any vertical feature really does help to slow you down, if you feel there are walls, even if it's plant walls next to you, you do slow down. I can comment on the fact, depending on the median strips, width, size, and access, the fear is something will get planted, and it'll get overgrown, it'll be ugly, no one will maintain it, and we know with our harsh winters, there's a lot of treatment that occurs, and really does tend to kill if you plant really nice things in your, in your, you know, US 7 median. And so, my guess is there would still be hesitancy to do that, but that doesn't mean it gets eliminated at this stage, that would certainly be a design decision as the project moves forward.
Other questions from the board?
Yeah, you said it's gonna slow traffic down, with the numbers, I thought I saw like 16,000 people moving through, do you, do you expect that there will be a backup of traffic at those, at those...
I can't say definitively no, because I would bet as you come into town, when you do drop to a single lane, for example, as you continue on south on US 7, that there is sometimes some backups, and that things get a little gummed up as you reduce into a single lane. But what would happen is, as the design advances, there would be that evaluation, can a single lane roundabout not only handle the traffic of today, but in the future? And so the decision would be made at that time, does it make sense to go forward with a two-lane roundabout? What does that do to how it operates, how it looks? You know, there would be that evaluation at that time, if that is what is determined to be needed to accommodate future traffic that could be anticipated.
Okay. Second question is, is about pedestrian and bicycle traffic through these intersections. How do you treat that? Have you treated that successfully in the past?
Yeah, roundabouts are very good for pedestrians, because as I highlighted, as the pedestrian comes out, they're not looking both ways, there isn't churning traffic coming at them, they're literally crossing one leg at a time, so they come up, they see the traffic, say, coming from the roundabout, they wait, they cross to the splitter island, they have refuge there, they look in the other direction, they wait for a gap, and they continue to cross. And so, for the pedestrian, it tends to be a little easier and have less weight than when you have to wait at a signalized intersection for it to cycle through all of the traffic movements and come to the pedestrian phase. Cyclists can be a little bit more complicated, the good news is, when traffic slows to 25, the differential between, you know, the commuter cyclist who's gonna be out on, you know, US 7, or going from North Side Drive across, is going to be a cyclist that probably feels a little more comfortable in traffic, and the difference between that aggressive cyclist speed and the 25 mile a car is a little better than the currently, you know, someone coming in at 50 miles an hour versus a cyclist. The other thing that's done frequently, and at this location, since you have shared-use paths nearby, what might end up happening is there tends to be an option where there's a ramp up, so if I'm on North Side Drive, I can ramp up and be a part of a shared-use path, crossing with pedestrians or alongside them in a separated facility, and cross as if I'm a pedestrian to get across, say, US 7. So there's a few different ways that pedestrians, excuse me, that cyclists can be accommodated at the intersection, and again, those details would be fine-tuned as the process moves along.
And the last question is just about funding, is this state-funded?
Well, so that actually is, the anticipation is that this will then continue to be evaluated by V-Trans as a locally proposed project, if it receives, you know, overwhelming endorsement from the town. And it does have to compete with other locally proposed projects, but it certainly is something, like I said, it may, it already took the first level of investigation, and then it's kind of passed that first test, and then this process is to better refine what it is we're talking about. Sometimes what ends up happening from here is there's then some formal scoping, additional scoping done, where your two recent studies kind of recommended two different things, and there's the question about whether a roundabout should be a single lane or a two-lane. V-Trans might want to do another study, but the anticipation is that this would end up being, at some point, a V-Trans-funded project.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board? Can you just speak to, you mentioned an underpass for pedestrians?
Yes.
Can you just, I wasn't, I wasn't, I didn't have a concept of that in my head.
Sure, would you mind going back to that slide? I'll see if I have what number that was here, it was about midway through. Oh, perfect, yeah, so at the time, it wasn't part of the initial draft of this scoping report that I think was done in 2002, it was added right at the end, and I think it was something when the select board voted, they said, no, we want them to consider that pedestrian, or we want the project to move forward, but we want them to consider a pedestrian underpass. And so that was to attempt to provide, you know, safe passage for the pedestrians across US 7. As I mentioned, one that obviously comes with a significant cost because of that grade separation, and then you end up with, is it, you know, is it a dark tunnel? Do I feel comfortable walking in at night? Maybe, maybe not. So what you end up doing in a lot of cases, when it's a shared-use path, is you end upgrading it significantly, so that on the path, you feel natural to go down and go under an underpass. There are design treatments to make it successful, but I'm not sure you have, although today I saw more pedestrians and cyclists out there than I thought I would. So it's really looking at the demand and the desire lines and deciding, does something like that make sense to carry forward?
Great, all right. If there are no more questions from the board, then I want to ask if there are questions in the community? Yes, so please come up to the podium, Jen, I'm gonna ask you to step aside.
I want to say some notes.
Well, you may be, you may be up answering questions, but please indicate, give us your name.
Hi, Eric Postel, North Bennington, thanks to the board for your service to the community. I'm a bicyclist, 12 months a year, as at least one of you knows, and just today, I've commuted from North Bennington right through our existing circle, and at the end of the day, back. As a motorist, I absolutely love that roundabout, I'm used to them in Europe, and in our, I'm not, I'm old enough that I can remember the traffic jams that were there before it exists. So as a motorist, I'm all in. As a bicyclist, the one we have, which I would just ask that everybody factor this in, or whatever you decide, is dangerous. It's dangerous because it's too narrow to have a car next to the biker. Fortunately, there's two fixes, the expensive fix is widen it enough so it's not too wide, sorry, not too dangerous, because they're on top of each other. The second fix is to have signs, and I'm not an expert, so there are probably three or four others, as was mentioned, but another one is to have signs, so motorists know that bikers will take the lane. The way I get through those lanes is let the cars go by, and then I put my arm out, and I get right in the middle lane, so no car can go around me, and I go as fast as I can, so I don't delay them, and it's actually the entry points and the exit points that are too tight. The circle itself is wide enough, and then I'm, soon as I'm out, 30 seconds later, then the cars can do what they want to do. But I feel like we're, in planning for the future, bicycles is part of, part of the future, e-bikes are outselling e-cars, and, and e-bikes are a lot more affordable, so for those who care about economic equity, tourism, and all those things, planning for bicycles is also important alongside planning for cars. So thank you very much, I hope you'll incorporate all of this. I've previously written to the engineering firm to pass this on, and your comments on one of your slides about the safety and bicycle and pedestrian safety are, I think, very accurate and right on, so thank you.
Super, thank you very much. Other questions? Yes, Sam? Come on up and identify yourself.
Sam Rustino, Bennington, Vermont. I think I'm probably the only one that knows of this road, because I grew up there, 1960. I got 60 years of watching traffic, what it was, when we had trucking companies and stuff. My question is, I'm not a firm believer of kosher drive and Route 7. You put a roundabout in there, it's not a rotary, it's a roundabout, there's a difference. You talk about slowing down traffic, I hate to tell you, people are gonna challenge it. If you're going into, towards south, towards Sam's Crosswalk, yes, I own that crosswalk, by the deer park, tasty freeze, you've got pedestrian traffic going across there. How are you gonna slow traffic down to 30 miles per hour? They don't go 30, they go 45. Known for a traffic where it is now, it goes from 40 down to 30, and your line ends just after the state office buildings. After that, it's town. So I'm not a firm believer of that. Hicks Avenue is like putting two bowling balls inside of a marble bag. You've got Cumberland Farms, which sees a considerable amount of traffic, morning, noon, and night, along with McDonald's. Of course, if you're governing how traffic is going to be regulated, in the next 10 or 20 years, we're gonna have artificial intelligence, driverless vehicles, so we won't have a problem.
Yes, please, Deb, come on up.
I'm questioning the, the numbers that are in this spread. It looks to me like they're already seven years old, if I'm not mistaken.
You'll, you'll have to get up, so that Cat TV can actually hear you.
Yeah, V-Trans stopped keeping a, I think you're referring to the high-crash location information, and V-Trans stopped publishing a high-crash location, you know, guidance, back a number of years ago, so this is, it is outdated, but it is the last one that was published as far as, so someone may have raised in the rankings or lowered in the rankings, but that doesn't change the fact that this was a dangerous area and likely still is, because we haven't actually changed anything at it, and usually it's the geometric conditions that drive the crash history.
So my thoughts were, if it's already seven years old, and there's more businesses, and there's more businesses coming, how is that gonna affect this if, if and when this finally happens?
Deb, do you mean in terms of the numbers of crashes?
The function, if it's a good function to have, rather than to keep the lights. And I'm curious, when you consider a crash, say you got the intersection of Hicks Avenue, and then the intersection over by Aldi's. If the accident happens in front of McDonald's or the Shell station, is that considered a Hicks Avenue crash? Is it the fault the Hicks Avenue crash? I was just curious, because I've seen and heard about a lot of accidents there, and I see most of them are over by the Shell station, up, up from that intersection. Thank you.
Jen, is there any, do you have any, do you have any ideas?
I have responses kind of to each of the comments. One, I completely agree that I love this large reflective signage that says bikes take entire lane, or bikes should take or do take entire lane. I think that is very helpful for, you know, someone driving a vehicle to understand that that is the proper thing in a roundabout, and that's something I certainly can email to the town manager, so that you, you have what that signage is in the event you contemplate it in the future. I would also comment that regarding the speeds getting down to 25 miles an hour, that is really about how the design of the roundabout is, and I think you probably see that at the roundabout at the Walmart, is that it truly makes it so that even if you come in fast, you have to, to negotiate the roundabout, you do slow down. And so that's really a function of how it's designed to get people to drive at 25 miles an hour. And then the final thing is, in regards to the crash data, they do actually look at crash data by intersection in what they call the intersection's influence area, because although I might not crash right in the middle of the intersection, if I'm in a queue and I get rear-ended in that queue, it's still because I'm stopped at that intersection. So that's the intersection's influence area, and then they do also statistics for segments. And so, there are segments, one segment and two intersections that both hit that high-crash list. So, and as far as looking at the traffic, the concern about whether the infrastructure would be designed, that's what I indicated about, that the engineer, as the project moves forward, whether it's in scoping or is it in preliminary design, would do that detailed analysis to say...
in preliminary design, would do that detailed analysis to say, where are we now with volumes? And what do we think is happening here? What are the trends? And I know in recent years, we've all seen traffic really dropped off a little bit in COVID, and then all of a sudden, it spiked when a lot of people moved to Vermont and, you know, so really looking at the trends at that time and really trying to project, how do we accommodate future growth with the design so that evaluation will continue to occur?
Can I ask one quick question? So when you enter a roundabout, you have to reduce your speed. Assuming that when you exit a roundabout, your, your speed would also be lower. So it's, it's when you enter and when you exit?
Correct. Both, both the entry and the exit are designed with curvature that makes you have to slow down.
Any other questions from the board or the community? Yes, please.
Hi, Mark Anders of PCRC, and I did one of the studies that was up there, so just to out myself. So will we be getting, I'm interested in the underpass. Will we be getting more details, like what would the actual cost be? How long would it have to be? And I ask because one of the main users of that crossing will be high school students and junior high school students. Now, that's kind of, that was the impetus for putting that Kosher Drive path in, was they're kind of like our target audience. So, you know, I, I, I think that they're a little different than like a commuting commuter bicyclist. So I guess more details on that would be really appreciated.
Unfortunately, I don't have too many details to share with you at this point because it's just, you know, this point of the process is summarizing what has been heard and what has been brought up in studies in the past in trying to understand what the select board wants to move forward to pursue. And so I see that as, as, you know, if there is advanced scoping or in preliminary design, those details would be evaluated, and those potential designs laid out, and the feasibility really considered at, at that time. So, which actually really segues nicely into what then the next steps are. One, I would love it if you were into, you can go to the, to that, yeah. This is kind of the, the process, and although you did provide purpose and need information at the last meeting to Nicole, since we've kind of formalized it here and with a few modifications, would love a vote that really endorses the purpose and need. And then in addition to that is really a vote from the select board indicating what you would like to move forward or to be considered by V-Trans. So given everything that you've heard, do you want advancement of this project and investigation at those three intersections and to, to move forward? Do you hope that a roundabout will be evaluated? Or would you rather, you know, a signalized intersection solution be evaluated? Do you want to even say specifically that you'd like that grade-separated pedestrian crossing considered? Are there other things that you want documented in your vote that goes back to V-Trans that says, yes, we're supportive of this, we want this to move forward, but we don't want you to forget these things?
So shall we start with, maybe we could have a motion to, for the purposes of discussion, to confirm the need for, for a project to rethink, to slow down traffic, improve the aesthetics of the area, and to improve the ability of, of traffic that includes motorized vehicles, bicycles, and pedestrians? Looking for something like that? Yeah? Is there someone who can make a motion of that sort? Okay. Excellent. Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to kind of go back to the project purpose. And I think when it was proposed last time, we mentioned that we wanted it to be a welcoming area, and it was the 279 area that we specified. If maybe that could be put in the project purpose.
Would you mind flipping back to the purpose and need, just so that we can get that specific? Way back, it's probably like slide six or so, if I had to guess. There it is, yep.
Maybe a welcoming gateway, welcome, I, I'm not really sure how to word that, but I know that the 279 area, it really kind of just brings you into Bennington. So it might be nice for that to be part of the purpose.
So I think that was in the motion. Not just now? Yes, so it was one of the elements. We added, so yes, we added aesthetic to improve the aesthetics of the area. Yes, so does that meet, does that meet your need?
Yeah, as long as it's, you know, out there.
Should we specifically request more analysis of the underpass concept?
Well, wait, wait, wait. We're doing this motion first.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we've got, we've got at least three motions going.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if you were including it all in.
Yeah, no, we're doing just the, that, right now, we have a motion on the floor indicating that we need, the need for, for this, for this project, which includes safety, efficiency, and aesthetics.
Do the three roundabouts come bundled as one project for discussion purposes?
For discussion purposes and for your motion, yes. V-Trans is tracking them in different ways as different projects because they may or may not all get packaged together to be delivered. But for your purposes, if, if you make a motion and it moves forward, that will carry with all of the projects.
So the motion is, includes all three?
All three, yes. So the project as presented, yeah. All right, any more discussion? Are we ready to vote? All right, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, okay. Motion one, all right. So the second motion was to whether we want to move forward with these three, with this project. Is that correct?
That's correct. So you want to send a message to V-Trans that you are supportive of, of this project, these projects, however you want to word it, moving forward. And as a part of that, you certainly could add any particular, you know, comment to it that specifically we're interested in roundabouts, or, you know, anything else particularly as to what your preferred alternative looks like.
Okay, all right. So for the purposes of discussion, would it work to have a motion to move forward with the three roundabouts from Kosher Drive to Hicks Avenue first? Okay.
Second.
All right, any discussion? And now we can play with it. Done. Are we ready to vote? Yeah, okay. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, good. All right. So then, at least one more motion could be to look at the underpass, particularly for the safety of middle and high school students, to evaluate the, about, underpass evaluation, however we want to frame that.
That we'll be, we'll be asking V-Trans to do that?
And there's lots of time for modifications, adjustments, that, you know, we're, we're very, very far away from a final design.
You are. So I have not shown you a current design whatsoever.
This is in general terms.
What we're doing is initiating the process.
Right, right.
Yes, and requesting that they continue to, to consider
Right.
that underpass, if that's what you're, you're looking to have, continue to be considered. That doesn't necessarily mean it will work or it will be a part of the final project, but you want to make sure you're red-flagging it for them as an issue that has you concerned.
Okay. And there may be other things. That was the only thing that I thought of.
Does someone want to make that motion?
So moved.
Do we have, did you get a motion, Nancy?
I just did.
She knew the motion.
Um, second? Any discussion? All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right.
Great, thank you so much.
Sure, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jen.
We're very excited. It's good. All right, and then next up is another exciting project, the Ben High update. See, Dan is getting up.
Yes.
All right.
So just a quick recap, I don't know, tell me if you guys can't hear me, but we did a in-depth presentation at the last select board meeting. We're not going to put you through that again, I promise. Just a quick summary. And just to give you a heads up, what, what we're looking for this evening is essentially a vote from this board to authorize the town manager and staff to negotiate a development agreement with Hail Resources to redevelop the Ben High based on the terms that we've outlined in the, in tonight's meeting and the previous, much more detail in the previous meeting. So that's what we're, that's what we're going to, we hopefully end up this evening. Just want to remind folks who I have here with me, I have Shannon Barsati, who's our community development director. She's going to be doing a little bit of the presentation this evening. And I have Zach Hale and John Hale this evening. We've spared them from having to make the presentation, but they're here to answer questions. And as, as you know, they're very, very knowledgeable about the private partner portion of the project. So I'm going to just do a quick summary of what we're going to do, just to give you, let you know what we're going to do tonight, just a quick, we're going to do a quick background. We're going to talk quickly about the vision for the project, current ownership and site control, talk about generally the numbers, the, the financing, the, the cost of the project, and how that's going to get paid for. And then we're going to go to questions. So I am going to let Shannon take it over from here, and, and I'll be back up later.
Dan always gives me the fun part with the photos. So here's the Goldstone architecture to this aerial view rendering. For those of you who, who weren't able to see the last presentation, we're talking about the Ben High building at 650 Main Street, the former Bennington High School, and then Junior High. It's approximately 100,000 square feet located on 2.29 acres. And the scope of the project is for that 100,000 square feet, the town space is approximately 27,000 square feet, 14,000 square feet of that occupied by the Bennington Senior Center and Meals on Wheels programs for seniors, and approximately 13,000 square feet of gym space, the old gymnasium, exercise activity rooms, and locker and changing rooms that would be operated by the YMCA under their management agreement with the town. The residential space, approximately 70,000 square feet, a mix of market rate and affordable rental housing. Also included in that space, a possible childcare facility operated by the YMCA, 22 market rate apartments, 15 permanently affordable apartments. And the office space is 3,000 square feet along Pleasant Street. So here's the, the floor plan showing that. The recreation space, including the gymnasium, is the area in yellow. Behind that, the locker and changing rooms, and then the fitness activity rooms to the right. The orange space being the town senior center, and the pink space, the Meals on Wheels kitchen and office space. And then the area in front of that being the auditorium that would be used for the dining area for Meals on Wheels, and could also be community space, that's when Meals on Wheels is not in operation. And then the office spaces are the kind of purple and lilac color that's along Pleasant Street. Some more renderings of the courtyard space and the drop-off area for the childcare center. It also shows the covered walkways that would surround the current entrance and wraparound to the entrance off of the courtyard, which would be the main entrance. These are some exterior elevations which really show the scale of the building, and also that all of these renovations are going to be in keeping with the historic character of the building, given that it's on the National Register of Historic Places and also receiving historic tax credits. I'll pass it back to Dan.
Again, just a quick recap of what we explained last time, really quickly this time. But as you know, the property is currently owned by a Mr. Gilbert. The town has obtained site control of the property. We have a long-term lease with an option to purchase. It is assignable, so that can be assigned to Hail Resources if, if we move forward. Hail Resources will be purchasing the property. That is, that is the way that we've decided makes sense moving forward. So Hail Resources, LSC, or an affiliate will own the property, will own the building and the, and the land. The town will lease its portion of space, the 27,000 square feet from Hail Resources, and we will sublease to Meals on Wheels. Hail Resources will be responsible for constructing and obtaining all the funding for redevelopment of the entire building and site, including the town space to our specifications. Quick overview of the, the cost of the project, and in particular, the town's portion of the project. The overall project cost is approximately $28 million for the, all of the site and the building improvements, both the apartments, town space, office space, et cetera. We have committed, the town has committed up to $2 million for a construction of its portion of the space. And the, just to, just to kind of put that in perspective, the total construction cost for the town space is about $8 million. So that will be our contribution for the fit-up, for the build-out of the, the redevelopment of the town space. We have also committed to pre-development and fit-up costs of, of up to $500,000. All of that will be paid through ARPA funds, will not be local taxpayer money. We have also agreed, as, as folks know, to transfer the former senior center building to Chris Gilbert when the senior center and Meals on Wheels project is done. And that's part of the, part of the purchase of the property. So again, just to recap, the town, the town total contribution in cash will be $2.5 million in ARPA funds, plus the, the value of the former senior center will be credited to the town for its portion of the space being built out. We will have a long-term lease of our space, the 27,000 square feet, approximately $7.50 per square foot. That comes up to about $200,000 a year. And we have identified funding sources and savings to, to pay for that annual payment without any increase in the town budget. And we, if, if anybody really wants to look at that closely, it's detailed in fairly excruciating detail on the, on the PowerPoint that we did last time, and that's on the website. So then there will also be the annual operating costs, which will be up to $88,000 additional from what we pay now for our current senior center property. We expect most, if not all, of that to be covered in a reduction of the YMCA operating agreement due to increased revenues that the Y will be able to generate at that property. So, and just a note, because I know that this all ties into the ARPA funding, we anticipate after all this is done, that we'll still have about $400,000 in balance on the ARPA funds. And as we've noted before, that's been tentatively targeted for the skate park. They, those folks will be here in June probably to give us an update on that project. So just kind of a look ahead. Next steps. We hope that today, the select board will formally approve the manager and staff to negotiate a development agreement with Hail Resources based on the terms that we've discussed over the past couple meetings. And then we really hope to move quickly to develop that, get that agreement negotiated and agreed to by the parties, and get that before the select board on as early as June 12. That may be a little optimistic, but we like to set a deadline, and we'll push, we'll push our attorneys to, to get that negotiated because the, the basic terms have already been discussed, but parties have agreed to them. So we just need our attorneys to paper it over and, and get it in a, in a, in a development agreement that both the select board can authorize the town manager to sign and that the Hail Resources will sign. So that's kind of where we are. Happy to take any questions. I do note that lots and lots and lots of information on the website that Jonah has posted over the, over the past several months. So we do think a lot of the, a lot of the information that folks would be seeking is there. I do know that Jonah, you forwarded all the comments we received on the website to the select board already. So I know you folks have seen those. Most of those were very supportive, which was helpful. Nice to supportive, which was helpful, nice to see, and of course, happy to answer any questions from you folks and/or the public this evening, so let us know what you need to know before you can, before you feel comfortable proceeding.
Okay, so, questions?
I'm just gonna ask it again, let's hear that wonderful number of the positive tax implications once this property goes back on the tax rolls.
That, that's a speculation that you're asking for, but if the property is assessed in, in the $7 million range, when it is completed, you're probably looking at, what'd we say the last time, 160-some-odd thousand in revenue from the project, and I'm doing this really off the top of my head, so.
That does sound, what you, it's fairly close to what you said last time, so you're consistent.
Thank you, Dan.
It's a big number, we can't ignore it.
And that's annually generated, obviously.
It's a big number, yeah.
Yep, not just one year.
Right, okay.
And, and just reminding us that the current senior center property eventually goes back on the tax rolls as well.
Yes, that's true. That's a good point, so when, when it is transferred to the private owner, it will, it'll, it will immediately, well, the next year it'll be on the tax rolls, yeah, and any improvements that they do to that property will be reflected in an increased assessment.
Great. Other questions from select boards? Okay, any questions from the audience? Yes, Sam, please come up.
Sam Mercino, Bennington, Vermont. Friday and Saturday morning, activity at the Ben High. A drilling rig, well. Getting ahead of the project. Geothermal. I'm not firm believer in geothermal, the Veterans Home had a project, and I guess that didn't work out too well, how well would a geothermal be working for this project?
So I think Mr. Hale's gonna be able to help me out with that one, but I will tell you that these folks have long ago hired a mechanical engineer to help them out with the project, and the drilling is, is being done to ensure that they understand the situation there and can design a system that functions efficiently there, but I'll let John answer that.
Actually, John Hale, from Hale Resources, Dan, you actually answered it correctly. It's exploratory drilling, we drilled about 500 feet to look for water or see what, what we can get, and we have not got the results yet, that's given to the engineer, and they're gonna try to design a system. We're trying to get ahead of mechanicals during the construct, before we do construction documents, because we need to understand how we're gonna cool and heat this building, so.
Can we hit water 500 feet?
I, I don't know that answer yet.
Okay. I mean, we should, because we're on flood line, it should be hard to hit water.
It, it's a little more complicated than that, Sam, but.
Oh, I know. Thank you.
Yeah, we're not talking about groundwater, just to be clear, so it's, it needs to be below that level.
Dan, speaking to the mic.
So it needs to be much further below the groundwater level, we're talking about, you know, water that would be, what are we, in the bedrock?
Bedrock.
Yeah.
Okay. Other questions? No? Then I'm gonna ask the board if we could have a motion to authorize town staff to move forward with the development agreement with Hale Resources.
Happy to make that motion.
Okay. Okay, so one of you is making the motion the other second. Any more discussion? No? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposing or, what do they call it?
Abstentions.
Abstentions.
It's been a long evening.
Okay, great, hearing none, thank you.
Thank you very much, and hopefully back in June, so.
Great, lovely.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you. Great, so two exciting projects. Implementing Town Vision, let's see, what do we, so one thing we have on there are, we concluded the interviews for boards and commissions this evening, and so we are in the next few days going to put together a slate of, we had 16 openings on eight or nine boards, so we will be putting together the slate, and that will be put before the board on the first meeting in June. And prior to that, we will notify each of the candidates, the applicants, as to whether they are appointed to a board, and make sure that they are interested in serving. Okay. All right. Anything on CPAR?
We had an excellent training session on Saturday, I believe there's a plan in place for the upcoming listening session, so please look for more, more announcements on that.
And that listening session is when? June 29? Okay. All right, anything else under Town Vision, implementing Town Vision? No? Then we're on to the manager's report.
Yes, thank you. You were all gifted the Water Resources budget presentation when you arrived tonight. We are completed, we are looking at proposed rate increases of 1% in the water fund, 5% in the sewer fund, and we're asking if we could have a work session on the budgets on Monday, June 5th, which is one of your off-meeting nights, potentially starting at 5:00, to review both those budgets with my staff present.
Three.
Monday, June 5th.
Does June 5th look like it works for everyone? Okay, all right, so that sounds like that's a go.
Great.
Good.
We'll get that warned, and we'll make sure that Nancy Lively has a copy of the budget, and we'll get one to Jim Theriault, and I'm sure he's gonna ask for one before the night's out. So, moving forward, I have two action items for you this evening. The first is, the BBC has requested to close Pleasant Street from North Street to School Street on Saturday, July 1st. You heard from Jenny Newer that they have a very exciting music entity coming to join us at Thursday night, and they've worked with the various vendors on that street who will then possibly participate with the folks who visit the concert, so I'm looking for a motion to close Pleasant Street on July 1 from 9:00, I'm sorry, yes, 9:00 AM until 7:00 PM for a pop-up shop and vendor event.
Any discussion on that? No? Then all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions?
Very good.
Okay, great.
Thank you. And the second, the second item is, is pretty exciting for those of us who have been anticipating the bridge project near Miller's Toll on Route 9. In preparation for that project, the state has asked the town to execute an order to what is called a relocation adjustment order, and here I'm seeking your authority to sign the order on behalf of the town. It will begin the process of relocating the above-ground utilities, Green Mountain Power, cable, and phone away from the site to new locations to allow the project proceed, which is now scheduled for 2025.
All right, someone wanna make the motion?
So moved.
All right, any discussion?
Comment from the public.
May I ask a question on the bridge project?
Uh, sure, yeah, come on up.
Can I ask first?
Oh, yeah, wait, well, Gary's asking first, but you can go on up.
I'm just wondering if there's an impact to the Miller's Toll? Is that important?
There, more than likely will be, they have been involved in discussions with V-Trans in preparation for the project. Traffic will be closed for a period of time, I believe it's, they're trying to limit it to no more than 30 days while the, while the project is, is put in place. We did look at trying to maintain one lane during the project, but it really slowed the project down, and probably would have been much more of a disruption to the business than what we're talking.
Great, thank you.
And if I remember correctly, that was John's preference.
To close it?
Yeah.
Yes, not stall it.
Yes. Okay, yeah, come on up, Sam.
I know, you're pressed for time, because you got executive session. Question on the Beach Street project with the, starting of relocating utilities, will there be road closures from time to time, even before we even start getting into the bridge itself, of shutting it down between April and June? I mean, will, will, is there gonna be a certain timeframe where it's gonna be one lane for a week, or that's hard to determine right now?
There, there should be no closures while the utilities are relocated, those utilities mostly lie to the north side of the bridge, and should be able to be accessed without closing the road at all, there may be some cones in, in place as, because I'm, I think that some of their lift trucks will be needed to do the work, but there should be no closures for the utility relocation.
Yeah.
The bridge, the bridge will be closed from time to time once the construction starts, yes.
Yeah, because you got a lot of utilities on that, as you know, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, do we get a motion?
Any other, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any? Whatever.
Abstentions?
Or abstentions. I know. Okay, none, all right, excellent.
Very good.
Keep going.
Just, just a brief announcement, Willow Park Playground is now fully complete, we'll be moving some, some mulch around the site over the next several days, and there might be some small punchless items to take care of, but the majority of the work is done, the park is open, and it's safe to use, so folks enjoy the new playground at Willow Park. County Street, that project has begun, it more, more than likely will continue along, we're gonna be doing some leveling of the street where the old railroad crossing was, so that that bump in the street will be removed, and new sidewalk will be installed. We have just recently learned that a portion of the sidewalk will be widened to eight feet, seven to eight feet, on one side of the street, so that it will allow pedestrians and bike, bike folks to use it, and it will connect to the new trail, the rail trail, and we are also gonna be able to do that coming from Depot Street to the rail trail as well, so we'll have better access, safer access to the rail trail from, from along County Street, and then ultimately, the goal would be to continue that wider sidewalk from Depot Street to north, and from north to park, so that we'll ultimately connect with the pathway that moves up towards the middle school. Did I get that all right, Dan?
Just, we actually, he believes that he's gonna be able to install that all the way to North Street with this project. So we have a bike pad separated facility from North Street to Benmont with a connection to the rail trail, so nice extension, tying in folks, getting, feeding them into that, what we consider, you know, the spine of our pathway network.
Thank you, Dan. And then last, but not, certainly not least, the board asked for an update on the River Walk. Here, we once again will be using town crews and machinery and equipment to do this project, that is the widening of the pathway that we are gonna take and move all the way from school, from park to school, from school to north, and then into the, into the parking lot on, on Depot Street. We will then turn and head north along the, we'll call it the back of the Bennington, former Bennington Station, it's now engineering offices, so there'll be a connection all the way along the front of that directly to the new rail trail, all paved and wide enough to, to, to meet the requirements that, that these pathways must meet. Unfortunately, there will be some trees removed along the segment between north and school, one to help widen it, because it's very narrow, as you exit North Street onto the pathway, it's very narrow, so some of those norways will have to be removed, we'll plant additional trees in the future, they are fairly mature, so it will be startling, but they really must go. And then there are some trees along the northern side of the pathway between park and school that will also have to be removed, because we'll be running the lighting and the electrical for the lighting on that part of the pathway, along the north side of that particular pathway. So there'll be some changes from a landscaping perspective, it'll be wider, it'll be totally newly paved, and some of the seating areas will be, also be enhanced, and the lighting will be changed and upgraded, so similar throughout the walkway.
Can I ask you a question that comes up often, is that there are segments of it that are sort of straightaways, and skateboarders and bicyclists sometimes go kind of fast along those portions, are there any things that might be included that will slow traffic?
Pebbles.
I, I, I don't believe that we're contemplating any, any mechanisms to, to slow or, or avoid that kind of traffic, in fact, some of the things that we're going to be doing may actually straighten it even more.
In order to meet the standards for a bike pad, you need to widen it and make it more so that people can pass safely by each other, either passing them or going side by side, so, yes, you probably accommodate some higher speeds, but it'll be safer to go a higher speed on that, on that section.
It'll be safer for pedestrians?
Should be much safer for pedestrians, because you don't, if you only have a five-foot wide sidewalk, you're gonna find, or a skateboarder, you're gonna find a much slower pedestrian, the, the margin for error is not quite there, so, that is one of the things you really have to, we're gonna have to make sure that people, educate folks on how you use multi-use paths, you know, you need to, you need to notify if you're on a, if you're a cyclist or a, or a skateboarder and you're passing someone, you need to notify them either with a bell or on your left, you know, and that's just part of learning how to, how to navigate a multi-use path, but.
Is additional signage possibly being considered?
Yes.
Some sort of signage?
Yep, we want, we, we do need to actually upgrade the signs in that whole corridor, so.
I got a question for Stu, unrelated to the River Walk, but it's in the same vicinity, and that is, is there any start date for the skate park?
Not at this time, Dan may have some information for you.
Yeah, so as I mentioned earlier tonight, Jim, the folks from the, and that's gonna come up in upcoming agendas as well, the folks from the skate park have a conceptual design that they've developed, it's actually quite impressive, and they have a nice little fly-through feature, it's kind of cool, you guys will get to see that, obviously, we have tentatively scheduled them for the second meeting in June, and they have some rough orders of magnitude costs associated with it, and quite an attractive and interesting design, and I think really takes advantage of, you know, the, the area that, that parked by the, by the, by the, by the Bennington Station, so, I think you'll be impressed, and we'll hear what they have to say, and obviously, it's gonna be one of those situations where there'll be some public funding, but there's also gonna have to be a lot of private funding, and I think, I think that we're headed in the right direction on that one as well.
Thank you.
All right.
Yeah, oh, go ahead. Sorry, I appreciate the River Walk update, and the removal of the norways, I think many people appreciate that, they're so invasive, I've removed so many in my yard, there, I think, I think many people know that. How about the, the gifted trees, will they remain?
The gifted trees are along the pathway from Depot Street into the parking lot, they, as I last heard, were being incorporated into the design of the skate park, so that there may be one or two that are relocated, but they will be, they will be retained.
Okay, thank you, that's great news. Thanks.
Any more questions for Stu on the manager's report?
And that's all I have.
All right, all right, all right, upcoming agendas, right, so, so do we have maybe a solar?
Chelsea Solar will, is now coming to us on June 12th.
Okay, and we also have Ben High? And we also have Ben High maybe coming back, maybe?
Maybe, probably, to get back by 12.
Okay.
Maybe a little rest.
And we'll have the boards and commissions slate?
Yeah, the boards and commissions appointments.
And then on the second meeting in June, it sounds like maybe we have the BBC?
The BBC has planned to do their work plan and budget on the 26th of June.
Okay, and also maybe the skate park. Great, great, great. Okay, anybody know of anything else? Okay, all right. All right, then other business. Sarah, any other business?
I don't have any other business at the time, thank you.
Nothing from me.
Holy cow. Okay, whoever says there's nothing to do in Bennington, that's false, because there's Mayfest, Thursday Night Live, First Fridays, the cruises. I think that's it. But that's a lot. So there's a lot of stuff to do in Bennington.
There's more.
Huh?
I'm sure there's more.
There's way more. That's just what I thought of off the top of my head.
Music in the park, I heard.
All right.
March of Embrace, June 13, vote.
That's not us, that's the school district. That's not us.
That's not us?
No.
It affects us with the vote, school district.
Please, it's different board. All right, so now we, all right, so we have need of an executive session?
A brief executive session would be helpful, thank you.
Okay, and we are not planning to make a decision coming out?
There'll be no action taken after it, no.
Okay, could I have a motion to go into executive session? Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?